This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to an end. The town is about 606 the location at the Cocoa Civic Center. I want to thank you all for coming out today. I know these events are running time for all of us, and we appreciate you being here. But I think it's so important that you all know what's been happening in our city and what's being done in our city. I'll just keep you updated on the progress in the city's management. But with that being said, I'm going to go ahead and we're going to stand up for the pledge. And then after that, you will have Kevin come up and lead us in the education. So. Pledge of allegiance to the Lord, the God of the United States of America, and to the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, who are with us, who are with us, who are with us, who are with us.
Good evening, Heavenly Father. We come before you today as a people, one people, residents of the City of Cocoa, who are here, Father, looking for your hand of protection over the city. We thank you for the mayor, the city council, those who are filled with your spirit, continue to guide the city forward for the best for the people. Amen.
I'm going to start off by introducing to the council members. For District One, we have Mr. Mayor Goins. District Two, we have Councilman Bo Bear. He's not here. I mean, I'm sorry. Councilman Warner. And District Three, we have Councilman Because.
I'm District Four.
I get used to that. District Four, Councilman Because. And District Three, Councilman Bo Bear. So with that being said, I'm going to have to add another issue to the staff, really. And then we'll get started with our meeting here. Oh, Paul, that's big work for him. Yeah, I'm telling you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all for coming out tonight. I just wanted to take a moment to introduce the staff that's present here tonight. Should you have any questions after this meeting, they're available to take your questions in person or if you want to follow up with them at a later date. So we'll go ahead and get started right here in the back of the room. Our Administrative Services Director, Danny Trumati. Our Finance Director, Rebecca Bowman, trying to hide from either. Commander Nagin's in for Chief Hanlon tonight, representing the Police Department. We have Jack Walsh, our Utilities Director. Our City Attorney, Anthony Garnadese. Deputy Fire Chief, Sam Burr. Community Services Director, Nancy Budd. Public Works Director, Brian Smith. Our Public Relations Specialist, Samantha Sanger. And her assistant, Rachel Horst, Communication Specialist. They all put out these events, and we want to thank them. Monica Arsenal, Assistant City Clerk. And then I do want to thank Gail Van Tugend over there on the side who helped facilitate this site for this meeting. So welcome and thank you. We have a video presentation here for you tonight to kind of begin this off.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jake Williams, chairman of Mayor and City of Cocoa. This past year has been both a time of change and growth, as well as a time of concern as we've been taking to work throughout the long pandemic, and a time of social injustice, fight for racial equality. Along with my fellow council members and dedicated staff of the City of Cocoa, we push to make Cocoa the best community along the Space Coast, and our future is bright and we continue to improve for our residents and for our business community. In early 2020, we saw the rise of the coronavirus pandemic in the United States. The Royal County began to see cases in March and said some were actually quarantined to help slow the speed of this virus. The standard for like months of elimination was under a sacred home order issued by Governor Ron DeSantis, which saw businesses close their doors and everyone's way of life changed. As businesses began to open back up, it's still important for residents and businesses to like to adhere to the safe disease controlled safety protocols and guidelines continued to slow the spread of this virus. Your Cocoa City Council made save the priority by implementing employee safety policies and encouraging our community to wear face masks, others that practice the social distancing. This is something we in our community have never been through, but we acted quickly to ensure that our residents remain informed and safe and will continue to do all while preparing our community for hurricane season. The fight for justice and equality took the forefront for George Floyd and himself. The Cocoa council staff stood united with our community in advocating justice and real change in the fight for racial equalities in our communities.
We as Cocoa's are committed to being united, to moving forward, and to being in a better place. We can do it.
We will stand united with the peaceful forces who march in our communities.
We will march alongside.
We stand united in our efforts to build community trust and are dedicated to working with our residents for justice and change.
Together, our city has to make great strides forward in our efforts to be fair and accountable to all who are sworn to serve and who have been.
They're all dedicated to serve our community in all capacities with the highest level of professionalism and integrity.
Let's continue to move forward by working together to find real solutions to the crisis of faith in both now and in the future.
The Cocoa Police Department has worked hard over the years to build trust with their ongoing community police efforts and remain dedicated to working with our residents. The Cocoa Police Department was the first in our community to put all of our officers with body cameras. Last year, City Council established a police community relations and body community as a way to provide a vibrant community discussions within open forum a place for citizens to bring ideas and perspectives. And in June, our community gathered to support peaceful march for justice and racial equality. We were there alongside them. With all the ever greater uncertainty in our nation, we stand strong in our commitment to move this community forward. We continue to push for growth and development and build a bright future for Cocoa. This past year saw significant investments in infrastructure and development that we worked to make Cocoa drop in places where it would be plain. In the summer of 2019, Cocoa City Council approved a 10-year work plan for the stormwater system. This plan and overall stormwater assessment enabled the city to invest in stormwater infrastructure with increased maintenance and reduced overhaul production to help improve water quality. Public stormwater in this plan has already begun by including clearing vegetation in the water supply which served the stormwater retention facility. The vegetation caused nutrient buildup in the algae growing, reducing the quality of water. Flowing wells were installed in other stormwater ponds to also reduce nutrient buildup. The relief channel that they went and parked in Cocoa Village was cleared out to assist with drainage and flooding issues. The entire stormwater command system was clean and restored to original operating capacity with assistance of the resource required. Also, the city's Public Works Department purchased an additional street sweeper to keep our stormwater drains clear of debris. More projects are planned and continue to improve our stormwater system for future generations. The brand new Diamond Village Community Center was completed this year. This approximately 16,000 square foot facility is substantially larger than the existing seven, which was approximately 6,000 square feet, built in 1963 and was in a state of just repair and not in plans. After the final diameter square, we developed an agency plan update. The new center will be the boundary hub for community activities, such as meetings, sports after school programs, job training, workshops, healthcare services, and many more. Outright and updated waterfront master plan in Cocoa Village Waterfront saw some upgrades over the last year with the re-priorized waterfront promenade and updated baselits and T-docks. After the historical destruction that Hurricane blew up in this path back in 2017, Cocoa Village Waterfront was in need of repair. To brand supervised by the Florida Inland Navigation District and disaster reimbursement agreement, the city was able to reconstruct a brand new 250-foot T-dock that is able to accommodate indoor coastal waterway cruisers, 14 new baselits to accommodate both boats and now engines for structural stays, and a new more resilient riverfront park promenade that features two beautiful overlooks that allows our citizens and visitors to get closer to the water. This was on top of some of the other projects that were completed, such as an upgraded Morgan's A-100 and new one-up parking riverfront connector, which offers a safer and more convenient connection between the north side of I-20 and Cocoa Village. Soon the power lines and riverfront park baser will be gone, which could hold endless opportunities for our Cocoa Harbor. In an effort to increase survival level of parkage in Cocoa Village community, the city recently restructured current spaces in the village and is going through a design and engineering of additional home street public parking spaces and ramped up in city hall blocks. The Cocoa Community Redevelopment Agency has approved and amended and restated a redevelopment agreement for the hotel project in Cocoa Village at the old City Hall site in 603 River Avenue. The developer is currently in compliance with the town lines established to potential completion of this much anticipated project within the next three years. How each street began as a spanner of Oakley Hill and a resurfacing project would quickly reveal some building underlying structural issues in the road beginning to be replaced as well. A full depth reclamation was completed on this roadway which reveals a role about recycling the existing roadway material and extend the life of the road. The sidewalks were also reconstructed and custom-designed sidewalks in their other country will offer inspiring messages for some of our youngest Cocoa residents, although we're two of them from school each day. As part of the annual resurfacing program, the city identifies roadways in need of resurfacing, curbs and sidewalks that need to be replaced, curbings that need any upgrades, and identified stormwater pipes that may need repairs. Streets such as Washington Avenue, Barbara J. Street, the A.D., and C Street were all completed this year as part of this annual program. There has also been a significant project investment in our community, especially in the rural double housing. A number of housing projects are underway in some of the suburbs and have increased subdivision in the north end of Cocoa. Lakeside Ponds East off of Clear Lake Road, new homes in the Fermental Subdivision, and brand new development on 246 acres of State Road 548 and I-95. We are also seeing new apartment complexes offering multifamily housing in our community. Along State Road 528, Cocoa Brands is a new residential apartment complex. Antacore Preserve is a multifamily residential standard our apartment facility. Quell Ridge is a new condo facility proposed. Cocoa Village is even seeing a new hospital with the colleges of Cocoa Village, a townhome community on the south end of Village with architectural details that will complement the historical townhome Village. Habitat for Humanity also being constructed on six homes on Weyton Street and the Diamond Square community as part of their female veteran build projects. This project is an opportunity for low-income female veterans that own their own home and provide much-needed and filled housing for them. Our Cocoa Letter will offer affordable housing to seniors along State Road 524. All of these new developments are set to offer approximately 1,500 new residential units to the Cocoa community. The Cocoa Hospital 40, Honeydew Village, and Cocoa Shepherd House Terrace communities recently went through radical versions, which saw significant refurbishment of 327 units, including roofs, drywall, drains, pipe repairs, sidewalk replacement, driveway repairs, and much more. Economic development and growth is not successful without engaged community, citizens engagement, which was a part of our 2016 strategic plan was prioritized by the council. The first-ever Cocoa Citizens Academy began in 2019 as a way to get our residents more involved in the local government. A group of 20 residents and business owners attended eight sessions to learn more about their local government. Their environmental officials been how they can be a part of the process. Members of the academy toured city facilities, learned how to budget balance, watched the public safety personnel at work, and got hands-on experience with our utilities and public works employees, keeping it out for future sessions of the Cocoa Citizens Academy and how they can be a part of this current program.
Well, the thought is very, very interesting. It's good to see where the city was spending its money and what its priorities were, how we can bring information from the business community and the residential community to the city and vice versa, and have, you know, nurtured that working relationship. So I feel that we're definitely on the right track.
I think the program has wonderful, great opportunities for me to really learn more about community and the different types of programs that Cocoa offers. And it will be more valuable to be a part of this community and look at all the things that they have in place and the things that they are losing, just like the Citizens Academy that had this great city and this job that you have that really must be more about.
I want to say thank you so much to you, Cocoa, for putting this together, especially in Nashville. This is super effort, so worth the time that all of us put into it. It's amazing to have Cocoa together and to have all of those people who want to work at the top of our group of operations and members since nineteen ninety.
In 2020, the nation also embarked on a census. A census which happens every 10 years helped assign a distribution of approximately 675 million and federal funds each year for vital programs impacting housing, education, transportation, healthcare, public safety, and more. Local governments use the results to plan new roads, hospitals, and schools, as well as to ensure safety and emergency preparedness. Businesses use census data to determine whether to locate and build. And in 2010, Cocoa saw courses of our community go uncounted, which means less total dollars and less vital programs for our community. This year, we pushed to make sure our entire community was counted. Cocoa's Complete Count Committee was formed with community stakeholders helping to spread the word about the importance of the census to our community. Stakers in Florida asserted that no giveaways, schools supply drives, and churches. Members of the community took to social media to help spread the word. We want to make sure Cocoa gets counted in 2020. The Cocoa Fire Department is celebrating its centennial in 2020 and honored 100 years of service protecting our community. Over the last hundred years, the Cocoa Fire Department has grown from a small group of volunteer department operated out of stations in downtown Cocoa Village to the fire department we have today with command staff of five, support staff of two, and 42 highly trained firefighters working out of three stations, responding to over 5,000 potter fires, EMS emergency calls a year, and plan to celebrate this momentous occasion with our community when it's safe to do so. The Cocoa Police Department has a lot to celebrate over the past year as their K-9 officers and their four-legged departments were featured on a national television competition, Americas Top Dog. All three of our K-9 officers were invited to participate in the national casting call searching for the most interested and capable police K-9 teams in the country. A huge congratulations to Cocoa's own K-9 officer, Dan Rose, and his K-9 partner, Barrett, who won in the national competition. Our young Cocoa residents have really done some amazing things over the last year as well. Cocoa High Schools have many accomplishments this past year, including their title award-winning coral program. The Cocoa High Corps was invited last October to City of Carnegie Hall, of only a few programs in the nation to receive this honor, and they raised $85,000 of length this once-in-a-lifetime trip. Another elementary school, which runs the county's only community school, had both a Teacher of the Year, Miss Kathy Arnold Brown, and a Principal of the Year, Mr. Chris Reed. Although their leadership have never earned the highest school grade in over 10 years. Mr. Demani Clark with Gabriel Del Hunter was named the Rookie Teacher of the Year and led the school's first ever chess team to new heights with first-place finish in their tournaments throughout the year. We are so proud of the many accomplishments of our young residents and our gear of support that puts them to be amazing individuals. As you can see, City Council and staff along with assistants of our dedicated residents, business owners, and schools have worked to make this community great and continue to build a bright future for Cocoa. Our continuing to honor and recognize our past. And in the year ahead, we will be embarking on a master plan to work to improve in our many parts throughout the community. We will also be prioritizing our sustainability plan that will help make Cocoa a more resilient and sustainable community for the future. And in our efforts to continue to strategically plan for Cocoa's future, we will be embarking on citizen survey to get more information for our residents and business owners that will help shape the direction of our great community. Cocoa's future is bright. Through strategic partnership and community engagement, we will continue on a great path of success for many years to come. Thank you. Thank you.
That's how you really, that's how you really participate, that's how we really can stay at the local level. And I think that's important to all of us now, sometimes national colleges are just so crazy. I don't even want to live with the news anymore. But I know that at the local level, each and every one of us can have a say and participate and try to make things better for all of us. So, thanks for being involved. Uh, is that enough?
Yeah, I kick myself for this. I did want to highlight New Star or New Star's city manager, select, uh, Mr. Stockton Wiggum. He's here today, so he's a gentleman back there in the back, if you don't mind standing. I apologize for not mentioning yourself. Um, Debbie Mary Golding.
Good evening, good evening. Everybody, you're on. First of all, I appreciate everyone having come. Just watching the video, um, you understand, you're kind of a little bit emotional. I think sometimes when you're on council, um, you get sometimes caught up in some of the drama and things that's going on. It happens so fast. Um, I really do realize I've been on council now for close to two years, and it really feels like six. But, but, but the, um, just watching the video, it, it shows how much work we have put in. Yes, there's drama, yes, there's different things that go on every city council. I know you see it, but I promise you, you not sight after the council. Okay, so we use our hands if we go outside of the way. But I really appreciate how council, um, which has approved a lot of things that I've seen in that video. I'm going to add, add a couple of that too. Um, but sometimes again, you get caught up, you don't realize how much we intend on council if you wouldn't make, um, for the city, um, and definitely our county. Um, you know, you definitely know, we already talked about Hensley Creek, that's ninety-four miles, Baytown, West eighty-six miles, uh, Lake, Lake of County Road, three hundred and twenty miles. Um, September Trail, two hundred and forty-eight apartments. We had a number of all that, um, Dr. Zoe Smith Center, several other things that Saint, Saint Mark's Church, uh, did. They, they have our, our back on the, um, um, it, it, it's, it's so many things that we have done positively. I really did, again, I really appreciate the council, um, which has approved a lot of these things for the citizens. So, I thank, thank you all for that. Um, we also approved the, uh, suicide situation program, which allow our police officers discretion, uh, when, when traffic stops, um, dealing with marijuana, um, sometimes young, young people get caught up in those different meters and dozens. And, um, uh, I haven't, uh, swallowed my marijuana, so this gave our officers the opportunity to give them fines instead of any arrest. Uh, we also approved the vote vending, which allow, uh, vote vending, uh, businesses to set up shop legally within the city of Coco, which before it was not allowed to set up within the city unless it was for a special needs home. And then also to add that it was not just about the local food companies, it was any local, you know, the dog grooming, uh, car washing, whatever it is. Um, and then, and then, uh, the last thing was, uh, the big thing in Coco is really changing the image. Um, I believe we have done some great things, definitely in our schools, a lot of this will be at the elementary school, uh, in the Georgia, I think, and so many other schools that we have in the city of Coco. Um, but changing that image is really not just about city councils. Um, it's really about you. It's really about all of our community coming together, working with, toward the course, and working with each other to make our community a better place. I get tired of arguing with people about the city, I do all the time. And I'm proud of you because I love the city. And so whatever I can do, um, to show people that the city of Coco is moving in the right direction, that's what I'll do. I believe just by watching that short video, that, that was just a small bit of what we have done within the last two years. So, so again, I appreciate you being here, um, let's make Coco a better place. I know we can, um, we just want it in the right direction, and I believe moving forward, uh, because we don't make the same, uh, the best city possible, the city of Coco. But thank you all, appreciate it.
Council on the morning. District two.
You would think after spending eight years as a representative for district two, you would know where that's.
Good evening, thank you all for being here. My name is Pop, I was not expecting our appearance to be so long and so short. Mrs. Pop has come in to help volunteers really get home for me while I'm sitting here because in nineteen ninety-six, I volunteered to help the city celebrate its centennial by getting it all really together, auctioning, and getting a parade. And that volunteer to help with that parade started three years of volunteering and twenty years of public service as either a work member or a councilperson for the city of Coco. And I had not agreed to work for Mr. Morton and put on a parade, I probably would have never gotten involved. So, if you have an opportunity to volunteer, if you have the time, please do, we never know where it will be. But having this is mine, last couple of months on the council, and my last few months in the city of Coco. Um, I was goodbye. Uh, I'm leaving to Hennepin, Georgia, where, um, my daughter's starting with the local work. And she needs to support her, so it's important to be a member of this worker. Couple of people have asked me about the last twenty years, and what I'm proud of stuff, and there's still many things that I gave them in solicitude. The thing that I see right now, that I participated in, that made one of the biggest impacts in this community is the building of the stadium in Coco. Before, we had our own football field, the Coco High School, our kids playing in the rock cage. And we have children who understand how important it is to be proud of your school, pride of your sports teams, and how important it is to be able to go to school and participate with a group of people that should be proud, should just say, but. When we built the stadium, when we didn't have any money, when I first started this, the city of Coco had listed a million dollars a year in lawn taxes. We really had nothing to do it, but we did it anyway. And we spent your taxpayer money to build that stadium, and then we gave it to the school board. Because we felt that that investment down in school was so important. I can look right now and see that building that Coco Stadium had a huge impact. Um, we built a Coco High School, just in multiple, uh, breaks that we had. They have multiple first round graduates, multiple kids go to college, scholarships. And I honestly believe that the endeavor that happened, at least not to that group, without that investment. So, whenever you look at what your city is doing and how we're investing your money, how your council is spending your money, is always, always looking to the future and what's best for the city. But I personally learned that there was a gentleman who served on the city council for many years, his name is Noah, I've got a friend here in the audience, I know. And he said to me, you don't ever have to worry about doing the wrong thing if you always do. Go start for the most people and the city all the time. That's always been how I've handled my decisions, was best for the most people in the city of Coco all the time. And I know that the people who follow me and continue to serve on this council will do the same thing, do what's best for the city, best for the residents all the time. Thank you all so much for letting me serve you for the last twenty years.
I'm going to tell you all that I have a clipboard there, and I have a lot of things that I want to talk about tonight. But I'm not going to talk about those things tonight because, uh, I believe that, uh, we've had a positive video of you focusing what's happening in our community. And I don't think it's necessary, uh, kind of been easy for some of us, and that's a fact. And, uh, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to do that, I'm not going to talk about it. I'm just grateful for you all being here and, uh, just seeing some of the stuff that's happening and seeing some of the odd things that are happening in this city. And through it all, we were still doing the job we're elected to do, and we continue to do that until the end. So, at this time, I'm going to give you all the opportunity, uh, this is opportunity for you all. If you have any concerns or any issues, uh, be glad to hear those, it's your opportunity to, to just, um, you know, just, uh, raise your hand and she'll bring the mic to you and, uh, just, uh.
Go up to the table where feelings. Yep.
Are there any other, um, neighbors of Manor Drive and Circle Drive here today currently at the scene? Can you come up to me? Please. One of your neighbors.
Thanks to you all, though, this is Manor Drive, we're, um, um, a former councilman, uh, was away with, uh, lost his wife, uh, through a stabbing. And I need to see some of the, uh, his neighbors for the kind of more.
Um, am I allowed to take this off my face or do I have to?
No, you can take it off.
I lived on Manor Drive in Coco, Florida. I moved there in two thousand twelve in August. In two thousand twelve September, there was a, uh, there was a resident that lived at two twelve Echo Place who murdered somebody and was arrested. We had been there for eighty years. This same residence has an ongoing issue as this resident multiple calls to EMS for drug overdoses or a stabbing, the second or third verse, two people were stabbed. What I would like to know from the city of Coco is what are you guys going to do to make my neighborhood safe so my children can ride their bicycles in the neighborhood and I can save you all in my neighborhood without the rampant crimes going on? We had a meeting with the police last Friday, and we were given this. And basically, the ownership of what's going on in our neighborhood was put on us, that we were told to light it up, cut down our overhead, lock it up, have done security, put house numbers on our houses, have community cameras, and say something, see something. Call when we do, do see something that's out of the norm, which we do do, but we don't see any results. So, I'd like to know from the city, what is the police department doing and what is the city doing to make this a safer neighborhood?
Some might get it, uh.
Probably one with manager.
Yeah.
I think it is important that, that we all recognize, it's not just a problem on Manor Drive or Bedford Drive. It is problems in the city all over. I think it's important to know that I am not representing just one street. That I know there's many possible solutions. So, yeah, I think it's there.
Yeah, uh, I'd be happy to, uh, uh, respond to that question. Um, what you raised is the, the very question. Obviously, uh, the tragedy that occurred a week ago, still, uh, or two weeks ago now, is still fresh on everyone's minds. And, uh, you know, there's a lot of, uh, emotions involved with that type of violent crime that occurs in your neighborhood. And I think we can all, uh, look at our own neighborhoods and understand that there's a variety of factors that contribute to crime in your local neighborhood. While we all have a part in it, uh, the Coco Police Department is committed to addressing the crime in your neighborhoods and recognizing that each neighborhood has its own specific concerns, and it takes a holistic approach. And so, in the case, uh, you mentioned a resident there, a resident on Bedford Drive, uh, there is work being done, uh, related to that residence, and, uh, we will have.
What's your timeframe of getting on C-10? And what is the timeframe? I've been there eight years, they've been there eight years. His grandmother died in two thousand sixteen, they've been squabbling the property for four years. What is the timeframe?
Okay, uh, well, the, the issue that's occurring in that residence is fairly complicated. It's a legal matter, and it tells you that we are working exponentially.
Explain further, what's the complication? Yeah.
Okay, well, there's, uh, it involves both civil and criminal. And so, I don't want to talk about those cases here publicly. I'd be happy to work with any of the residents after this meeting or another time of your convenience to talk to you about them or the specifics that I need.
It seems more like we don't want to be on public record, with that, if this is being reported. I just want something on public record saying what the city and what the PPE plans to do to make it a safer neighborhood.
There is information on public record already that exists with Coco Forest National property, but we have to share that with you as well.
Why can't you share it right now?
I don't have it with you right now. And you're satisfied or meeting that you've met a threat that to the community? Uh, I will, I will get back with you, but I will tell you that we're talking about a civil and criminal, uh, case. And so, I can't give you a specific timeline related to those. Now, you said you were willing to, uh, talk to us upon, just, uh, what's going on with that. Yes, uh, certainly, we'd be happy to sit down with you and provide you an update on where we're at and what we're working on. Okay, so you're saying you're happy to do that, my question is, what you're going to do? Yeah, that we, uh, have a system reach out to you tomorrow, maybe you can see your contact information. We'd have to do that. Uh, tomorrow would be, you know, just sort of, we'll talk about that, right, for this mission, but maybe on another day? Yeah, and we'll reach out to you tomorrow according to the best time numbers for those neighbors that are interested.
Um, I've lived in, in that neighborhood for three, three years. And, uh, I just, we do have a problem with that guy, so I'm pretty certain from what I know, you've been arguing something about it, and I don't think he's holding forward the room in the place to give that information out. I do want to compliment the police department, the Coco Police Department. You did have a murder on Friday in my buddy, you had a person arrested. And there was just great police work back then, so should be complimented for that.
And like you said, we could please see your contact information for me, we're reaching out to you according to the best time numbers.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I think most of you are going to be seeing on TV, seeing the news, seeing any community, so I will reiterate something once again. Our police need to be modernized, instead of sitting in cars, police are a problem if the bathroom stops, I'm saying one more time, I don't want to see our police as in teams, walking up and down, not sitting around here doing that in the fair. We talked about this, it only does with the police, we need to see the police mobile in our community, introducing this in our community, especially in Cocoa Park, Prospect Park, we always have a problem with that, we want to see the police mobile on their feet, not police in the park.
I would say from my perspective, I've seen my community go from what felt like a state area to a less and less state area where teenage girls are being chased by cars, and when I talk to the police, I've got comments like, "How do you know the girls, they've asked the girls, how do you know they're chasing you?" You know, "How do you know they're not chasing us all?" It's, it's, I, they, the girls, I have to sit with them so that they'll actually call the police, otherwise they won't, because that is the general, generally, is they do not want to approach the police and the neighbors also. When there's issues, and there's been issues in my neighborhood, nobody wants to call the police because we feel like we're bothering them and making calls. It's, it's like every, every third time I'll call, I might get someone to telephone, a lot of times I don't, I feel very, um, put off. The, they thought that the park was locked down in my neighborhood by other college, because there's, at parks in general, they're not wanting to police the park, so they just lock them down, and I, the whole community, I just feel like this is not the way to go. I've been trying, I have to thank Lorraine Cosby, that's also someone that got me involved with these sustainability worries, I've been trying for the last three years to just figure out, you know, why is the government not representing the people of the city?
We keep at it and not let that initial wall stop us.
I'm Teresa, I run the New Main Society, and I would like to boast, if I will, for the sixty-eight years that the New Main Society has been serving the residents of Robert County, specifically Cocoa residents, we just received a $20,000 grant from the state of Florida Car Act, so I want to share with everyone, if you know someone that has a cat or that has community cats, which are also called feral cats, we're doing free spay and neuters through that grant, through the pack. My focus mostly is in the Cocoa area, so we are welcoming anyone that could do like that. Also, we built a training building on the property on Cox Road in Cocoa, and we're offering dog training. Grateful to the residents of Robert County who are willing to help us out with walking dogs and things like that. So, on a positive note, the city of Cocoa has done a wonderful job with the cat population in regards to helping us getting them all spayed or neutered, because when you break the cycle, then they don't need more, particularly for people that are unhappy that there are stray cats in their yards doing things they shouldn't. If, if they're not interested in mating, then they have less tendencies to do things in their yard. So, just want to share that with all of the residents because it is a grant, so it could be nullified free, and this year, the grant also includes a free breeding shot. All you have to do is just call the New Main Society, plenty of time, get an appointment, and we'll get to take care of you for a minute, and then the same day you can come back out. But I do appreciate all the things that all of we do, because I also recognize that y'all are doing the best, we do the best we can with what we have, and during COVID, I know it's been very difficult, so we do require that people wear masks coming into any of our facilities. And I'd also just like to say thank you to the city of Cocoa leadership for making it mandatory in Cocoa as other cities have, because I do believe that this protects the end, so thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Veronica Whitehead, I have not lived in Cocoa for long, but my job takes me all over the county, and if I wanted that the Cocoa, the ladies and gentlemen that is up here is talking about the streets in Cocoa, I work for Robert County Environment and Health, for a place program, and the place program involves this acronym for protocol for assessing community excellence. And with that being said, I, my job is to go door to door, talk to the people in the neighborhood and the different neighborhoods, which is the uninated areas in Cocoa, and writing for plans. Some of the things I had to do, I went out and passed down the mask and instructions on how to take care of masks, making sure that the new protocol be tested for COVID, everything, where to get the results from, but some of the things that I've seen while going out, and I've been put up against a lot of walls, oh, that's it, it's, oh, that's counted, that's not it, you need to do this, you need to do that, all the way down, putting down palm trees for people to see the signs. I actually seen, it wasn't Cocoa, but it was a VCS or a B Cocoa, where instead of watching the drug activity that was going on, they was pulled back, like, up into the area where the drug activity was happening, I'm like, "Wait a minute." They should have been part of across the street in the business, looking over there, and each and every time I go out, because I don't have no set, no particular day or time that I go out into the community, but for Cocoa, you do a lot of stuff, other streets, these people live there, that's fine, I live in Rockfish, but I cannot turn my back on the people, because that's my job. And to hear them come up and talk about some of the things that I'm trying to do, I'm like, "Okay, that's the same thing I'm trying to do, clean the ditches up out of some of these people's yards." So, and I had to tell the address, so I had to let them, "Oh, that's not our responsibility, that's the homeowners." How am I supposed to clean up, clean up a ditch that wide and that deep? That's not. So whose responsibility is it? Is it the city, is it county? Nobody wants to assume the responsibility. Nobody wants to assume responsibility of sitting, like I said, sitting in the cars and just watching, like, "Oh, I get off in a few hours." I know the drill. I worked for the sheriff's department for thirty-seven years, even though I worked in jail, but I know the drill that they do. When it's supposed to happen, they're hitting off, they disappear, they hide, off of Little Lake Road, nobody wants to work Little Lake Road. Why? Because so much back to you, they go home. But that's not what they're supposed to do. They're supposed, like I said, go out and sit around, hide in your car, you gotta walk sometimes, and you gotta, you know, and quit saying that, "Oh, it's the city," so they know that it's everybody who took the oath to serve and protect. Now, my job is to help the community to get their community up to heart, to where their children can play out in the yard, all the way from putting speed pumps up, anything like that they need to do. But then when they say, "Well, oh, you need to go out and take a survey," so they don't want me to take the survey, they want the community, so I guess, well, why can't I just go out and let inside their name and what they want to do? They think that I'm coercive and into that, but I'm not. So all I'm trying to do is just to help me, to help the community to clean up their areas so that it can be a better place for each and everybody to live, and stop turning our heads and just say, "Who knows?" Anybody trying to get slapped, all the bushes that I've seen and tried to get cut down, oh, they could go and go through there with some kind of moral, they laid it down, but that's not cutting it down. I need it cut down so that people can see what's going on. Thank you.
Good evening. I have a question, I don't know if this is the form they ask, but in regards to our neighborhood and Spectrum putting in the ground services in our neighborhood, I'd like to find out if they have a right to bury those lines on our property or if they need permission from the homeowners. So I'd like to talk to someone that might know about that. Thank you.
Yeah, and I was saying, my thought, they, they came out in one morning, I believe yesterday, and they started digging in my front yard, my property. I didn't use nothing above what was going on happening, and the guy that was digging in the ground, they called me. Now, I think, and I'm not so sure, but they're gonna put a structure on a table that's sticking out in my property, we thought it would pass the deed provision. S T L needs an underground service, which I'm very happy that they did it. We had pre-did it. Why they gave them a route? They gave inside of me because they were, they decided they were gonna push a transformer in my front yard, and they wanted my approval. And where I wanted is my property. I didn't have no problem, and I probably wouldn't have no problem with what they were doing, but I think that Spectrum should have at least the respect to come over and ask us, "Do you want to do this?" I'll meet the list. If we do this, because it's my property, I have a security system, and I'm afraid that they're gonna come in tomorrow, next week, and put big cylinders, items, tables there. We thought even asking them, "Is this okay?" S T L asked me where I wanted it, and they decided with my help, where I wanted it. So I think that the city, I don't know if we're worth this or not, but this company should have, you know, at least the business team come over to the owner and say, "We're gonna be doing this, it's okay." And maybe we can, yeah, maybe we can.
Thank you for sharing your concern, and when it comes to private utility providers, the city actually authorizes their ability to provide the services that are received through franchise agreement, so we'd have to be happy to deal with each of you, if you're in a difficult situation, to find out what's going on in this issue with your interaction with us.
So, I've heard they already dug the ditches and put the lines in and kept on going even when we told them that they didn't have our permission, they just went ahead and did it, and they cleaned it up, and there was their energy. I'm sorry, and this is gonna affect the whole city, because the whole city, I think, is getting this table, so it's something that really needs to be looked at quick quickly.
Yes, and like you said, we'd be happy to, if you want to know exactly what happened in your area, because while you have private property rights, there's also easements, property rights, services, so-
Right, right, and city right away.
Okay, and, and, and so the city there, it's really, they're like, they're gonna do it, absolutely. And it looks like they're gonna do it right next to the transformer, so have a big transformer involved, that big cylinder, you know, if I wanted-
Is that why there's flash on our property? Yes, well, I was a consultant about that, like, Jay, don't you have some other units? On my property, there's flash to all my properties, so there's these very, um, points without my permission on my property.
Like you said, I'm not familiar with very individual properties, so like, did we see something related to that, in that these are nation?
There's a big truck, I live with five people, so this gets involved. One thing at all.
I mean, for the quiet, but I saw a problem, so, you think that's good, right?
Yeah, I just, I just need to determine if that's the case and then look into what exactly you're gonna be doing, because it sounds like it's impacting more than just individual residence areas, it's a larger project, and so-
The larger part is that it's consistent through this with S T L, for us twelve months ago, and now they're coming along and tearing everybody's yard up again, but it could have all been done at the same time. So, and, he's right, there's all this equipment on the street, we knew that S T L was coming, they gave us no sunroof doors, they told us they were coming, they said, "We're gonna be here," they knocked on my door and said, "We're gonna be here tomorrow to run the line from the street up to your house." These people have not communicated at all, I didn't even know of Spectrum until Nancy told me.
Okay, yeah, and what the council is speaking about, S T L is doing some harvesting throughout their systems, you see concrete holes as well, some undergrounding of the service lines into the homes, and so, you know, they have a little bit different business model, maybe than Spectrum, but like you said, we'll reach out to Spectrum and ask them to, you know, this individual property, and just determine what are the impacts on their areas, if we can look at that, determine that they have the right to actually be there.
You have to understand too, in this neighborhood, the houses are only twenty-five or thirty feet from the street in a lot of instances, so when they're burying the line inside the right way, they could be burying the line ten foot from your front door, so it's a huge impact.
The neighborhood has set system as well, and it can impact the set system, so that was the issue with S T L and some of the positioning of where they want to put those lines. I saw that the flag was for something that S T L was doing.
Has the flag say S T L?
Yeah, it says electric line, but the reason that I gave S T L, not around the whole perimeter of my property, the flag's on the perimeter.
It's just like, S T L, get up in, informed of all that's going on. We don't know what's going on. As a matter of fact, I was gonna stop this tomorrow, if they start putting this, I think, no, 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 take it.
This is the first time I'm hearing of it, but we will certainly, on behalf of that neighborhood, where Spectrum needed more information, find out exactly whether you're doing- where the Spectrum needed more information, find out exactly whether you're doing, whether you're being working. And we can help with it here in individual properties, determine the impacts.
Okay, that you may probably know, you're going to do it. I'm sure I can tell you. Very likely the city.
Well, that's why, you know, we can assist you on your behalf, look into their actual project, where they're doing the work.
They'll be back at seven in the morning.
I have a question. If you, who gave permission for these people start working? If we, you know, like, you know what's going on? So how they come to the neighborhood, they're starting in without any, nobody knows, you individual, you know that either?
Like, like I said, I mean, this is a private utility provider, if they're going to work within the easement that's been granted to them, they perform that work. But they, but they provide this information to you, I'm not sure. But that's what I want to look into.
I don't talk about that, I'm not even that. Go for it. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Gerald Brown, Jr. I live down on 520 in Cocoa, I have a business, and my home is on 520. I've been here for 45 years. I hope I'm there a few more years. I've had people interested in my property, and I had to make up my mind, am I staying with Cocoa or am I going to sell? And I like Cocoa, so it's like I'm going to be here for a while. But I hope it's so important to me that we do never talk about or consider defunding our police department. I don't want to ever hear that word before our county, our city council. We totally didn't think about that. If anything, we need more education for our police department, because things change. We're living in a different world. I'm 77 years old, I don't even recognize this world. We have to make changes. We've got to make changes, but we should have to change. Everybody has to change to follow along with what's happening with their lives. So I hope the city council, never has to have any question about our police department as far as funding. And also, I'd like to know, if you could tell me in two words, what are New Jolly Smith Center? What is the agenda there? Is there any city apartments in there? Is there other activities going on in there that's city-related? Or is it just a two nation that we're going to have different ballgames in there? Could you tell me in two words what we're going to do about that?
Yes, it's actually a good question, because as you saw on the video, it's a pretty large facility, even compared to the former facility. And it's also mentioned that that kind of came out of the Diamond Square redevelopment plan, and within that division, more than just the recreational center. Division services coming privately into that neighborhood. That will include senior programming, recreational activities, community action, the bar county isn't there, that assists residents with services, as well as after-school programming for our youth. Some of those offices on the front, set up for after-school programming. So senior programming, youth programming, recreational activities with the community, there's any outdoor swimming pool, outdoor basketball court, new playground, all of that reversion.
I understand all of that. But I don't see where they're going to park all these automobiles that are going to be there. They've got to make some plans right now, because when they had COVID, they had a two cars in there, and the pile of trucks looked like it was almost taking out. What are they going to do about school buses when they come in and leave, they let the kids off and on, when they get games and all? Where do those school buses go? I mean, they only going to have 50 people in there with 50 cars. I don't understand that one at all. I don't know where they're going to put them. But they're going to have to make some plans for it. Because if that center gets working the way it should, it's going to be bad. Some of the people are scared. No.
The facilities are, the facilities are designed for the day-to-day operational use. Those kinds of special events that may drag more, they would have a plan for that, for off-site parking, the buses, drop off, whatever it may be, you made those, the overhang right at the front for drop off and insert the apartment there. So those special events that would draw a lot of votes would be a plan for the off-site parking.
If the city considered Foster Street, on Stone Street, all those, nearly in there with the beautiful off-street parking, you'd have to walk across the street. But now is the time to talk to those people, people that get some going. I guess once you have some of the big events, if you see what the cars are going to be, then it's going to be nice.
Sure. And the city has the property area that we can work with, working in that organization.
What do they expect to happen in the event?
As far as the grand opening, they're planning an event here in the near future. I don't have a date, it would be right now, but in the near future, some event that provides separation and safety for those who would certainly be likely to have a full-scale grand opening, invite the entire community inside. But right now, it's looking at more of an outdoor type event with smaller group tours through the facility.
The date for the grand opening, October 17.
October 17.
17th, correct? 17th. October 17. And we won't see a whole lot right now, school has started COVID with all these assignments, so they're closed at 4 o'clock, just based on COVID, and they are short on staff, there's no summer camp, things like that. So the grand opening, they're going to keep it, it won't be COVID, I'm going to need to verify that they're COVID, slow down a lot of progress.
But that place is going to be busy, I expect. Oh, sorry. Here we go. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a online comment that I wanted to read as well, and then, I'm trying to speak to it. I am thankful to be joining, this is Diana Robinson, 1213 Allen in the Lane. I think we'll be joining online tonight, and glad to be part of this community. In the last six weeks, the Sheriff's Department, Pearl Rucker, has served a lot, and have a social close to a house, a few people. Is there a way to find out what is going on as far as the immediate grip or anger in real time? No word or website? I don't know if you want to speak to that. And, um...
Where do you want me at?
You can go up right around that.
I have a big mouth, so I can handle it. At least that's what I want to do.
I mean, the Bar County Sheriff's Office actually operates the helicopter, the crime services, around County, all the agencies, state, federal, whenever they visit. It's not always us, it's our department, something we do, they respond. They normally let us know when they're in the area, if they're above your house, if you're concerned, calling up with an emergency number, something we share, we'd be glad to do. We don't post it on the website, because if they're up, it's real time. Same.
That was it, yep.
I just want to have a listen, Brown, say something about these, I don't know, please support. I've heard that from, we've heard that from, I don't know where you're going, but I know that, you know, it's a, like, a lot of stuff is going on out here. But I don't think anyone is, I was very mentioning that, on one, I've heard from some folks they called to say that earlier that we were doing, I don't know where you're going. This school is ridiculous. These are some times right now that, you know, I take it very serious, and we take it very seriously, so it's just that, it's just one of those bad moments that are out there, there, there.
So I'd like to know, who are you going to call? Who's going to call?
Technically, we defund the police every year, technically, because we have a lot of nonprofit organizations that the police department real allocates money to those nonprofit organizations. So I know, it's political, wherever you throw out your own words, it doesn't mean what a lot of people want it to mean. But we technically do it right now, just, just to let you know that. So, yeah, we're local community first, we have real church that police don't need swings. We have Cocoa Power, they have programs to help out the police department with community relations, so in a sense, that's what we do all the time, so just to let you know.
I would say those are partnerships, not defunding. Partnerships with community organizations.
Well, I can tell you firsthand, I've been there for 45 years, I've seen such a change, and it's all for the better, yes, all for the better that down there. I don't want to see a backup. I, I don't want to have so much for my life, I love living there, I would have a lot of time protecting myself.
But if there's no more events, I'd just like to thank everyone for coming out today. I just wanted, I think it's important that our community know what's happening in the city, and what's going on. Even, just wanted to know that, even though we're going through this COVID pandemic, things have stopped for us. It's been a lot, I can tell you, I'm involved, and I've been involved, one of the city council members, serving thousands of meals throughout this pandemic. Not just serving meals, but also boxes of food, the fountains that we're eating, as recently as Friday. And we have 27 pallets of boxed vegetables and food that we handed out to residents. So it's just been some busy time. We're around there, we're not hiding, we're doing our job, we're doing exactly what we're elected to do. And I just thought it was important that you all knew what we were doing, what was happening in the city. And there are some great things that's happening in the city. And my goal, just like everyone else, is to, we want the city of Cocoa to be the best it can possibly be. I, I don't know like you, but I'm sick of trying to be considered dumping brown in the county. We're not, we're better than that. You know, we, we're a regional water supplier. And if our waters get enough for you, then our cities should be getting enough for you. So I just like, my goal is to change that image, change that perception. And that's what I've been fighting for, since they want, and will continue to fight for that. I want, we just have too much going on in the city. Where we're strategically located, you know, right smack in the center of the county, all these main terraces and roads that are going through our city. And we just haven't captured that. You know, you got Rockdale to the south, and it's just a halving area. You got Ford St. John to the north, we used to call this basin a halving area. But they're coming through the city of Cocoa to go to the fairies, and go to their restaurants. Why don't we have all the restaurants in the city of Cocoa? We're not capturing them, we should be capturing them. But that has a lot to do with literally about the blanket we have in our city, that are our main intersections, maintaining our intersections, our mediums. What people see driving through our city is important, very important. And, and once we can, we can change that, and reduce some of our street level crimes in our city, I can guarantee you, man, they're retiring our doors down, because we have the development coming to the city. I mean, they're, they're tearing our city right now, but we don't have the restaurants and other things that we need, and we have tons of amenities in our cities. And I say that we haven't taken advantage of, we haven't promoted. You know, and we just, you know, like one of the ladies you said up there, you know, we have Tennessee to shut things down, instead of policing them. I mean, these are amenities for all of us. The Cocoa Conservation, beautiful, absolutely beautiful. There were some, I remember there was a paintball in restaurants, and they pulled out some fixtures in the bathroom. You know, they brought some cameras out there, maybe we are a policing looking board. Those are amenities, all the things that we sell our city with. We have, you know, you look at Fomo's Park, Brummer Prophet Park, you look at our solar facility, VCC, YFCA, you know, these are things that we should have been selling our city though, the college, you know, East of Florida, we got all this technical, all this technical stuff going on, these schools that they're bringing to our community. These are selling points for selling people, and, and getting people to move to our city. And that's my goal, my, my goal, and our goal, is to change that image. And once we change that image, we can rebrand our city moving forward, and we can have a better Cocoa, a Cocoa that we all can be proud of. So with that being said, I thank you all for coming out, and this has been a great meeting, and, and I hope that you've got something out of it, and like the Democrats stated, you know, what you saw here is just a little sniff of what's been going on, and what we've been doing in our city. And so I thank you for coming out, be safe, and God bless you all.